All right, wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, March 21st, 2022. This is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park's Planning Board. I'm sorry. Let's get this up on the screen. All right. Okay. Madam Chairwoman, would you call this order?
Yes, the following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, amended on 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary. The notices and the conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the Guidelines of Virtual Meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America.
One nation, under God.
Thank you, and I will now take role. Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Here.
James Bonanno.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Here.
Jennifer Souter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor is absent. Eric Gallapo.
Here.
Daniel Scannamia.
Here.
Juanita Barnes. Is, I believe, absent. Rick Lambert.
I'm here.
Oh, no, she's here.
Oh, Juanita, you're here. Great, thank you. Sorry about that. Rick Lambert.
Here.
And Barbara Krzak.
Here.
Thank you very much. All right. So first, we have a couple minutes, or a few minutes, to go over. The first one is on the screen. It will be Exhibit B1, Minutes of March 7th, 2022.
Irene, there's a change on the last page. I voted against the application.
Oh, okay. This is the applet. Oh, yes, you're correct. I'm sorry about that. I will make that change.
On the last page, although I wasn't there at the meeting, I suggest that you read the last page, and there are several typos that need to be corrected for your record before you make it final. Just proofread it and make the corrections.
Are they grammatical errors?
Yes, grammatical errors.
All right, great. I will use spell check.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. All right, so any other changes or comments?
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the motion by?
Dan Scannamia.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I'm still getting used to your voice. I can't see you on the screen. Thank you. And everyone is eligible to vote except Mr. Henry and Barbara Krzak. So all eligible in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I abstain, obviously.
Yes, thank you.
Irene, should I abstain also?
Yes.
Yes, you can, yeah. Thank you. Any opposed? All right, Minutes of March 7th, 2022, memorialized. Okay, and the next minutes. This should, this is just cleaning up all of the minutes that were left over from when I was on maternity leave. And these are from February 4th, 2021, and this is Exhibit B2.
Okay.
Any questions or comments for these minutes? All right, everyone is eligible to vote except, of course, James and Rick Lambert.
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
And Daniel wouldn't be able to vote here. Yeah, well, I don't think.
Yeah, and anyone that wasn't, any other person that wasn't there, including Dan and Juanita Barnes.
Move to approve.
And that was Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion by Jim Henry. Can we get a second?
Second.
Was that Avon Clayton?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion by Jim Henry and a second by Avon Clayton. All other eligible members, how do you vote? Or say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, Minutes of February 4th, 2021, memorialized. And the last one is Minutes of January 11th, 2021. This is Exhibit B3. And I believe all members are eligible to vote on these minutes. Yes.
Except for Mr. Moore and Jen Souter.
They can still vote on the minutes. They were recused from the, one of the applications that day. So the only people not eligible are James Bonanno, Daniel Scannamia, and Juanita Barnes.
Move to approve.
Okay, so the motion by Rick Lambert.
No, that wasn't me.
Oh, it was Mr. Henry? Sorry. Thank you.
Okay.
Can we get a second?
Oh, I'll. I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. All right, all other eligible members, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, Minutes of January 11th, 2021, memorialized. Thank you. That takes care of all the board matters.
Okay, we have our next, our application, our only application for this evening for 649 Madison LLC.
Madam Chairwoman, if I may, I want to just clarify some procedural issues.
Of course.
We have ten members in attendance, including alternates. Has James, James, have you listened to the transcripts of the prior hearing?
I have not.
Okay, you can participate in the discussion this evening, but you would not be eligible to vote since you have not heard the entire record. So is everyone else, everyone else, Irene, is eligible according to your response to my email?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so James would be the only person excluded from the final vote, and we'd have nine eligible members. Fair enough. Okay. Okay.
Well, we would have eight regular members.
Okay.
Seven regular members, sorry, but we're using Alexis.
Nine. I'm counting ten people.
Right, including the alternate.
Right, so we would have nine members that are eligible to vote.
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Okay. All righty, Mr. Caris, I guess the floor is yours.
Thank you. If I may, and your chair is for the firm Fox Rothschild on behalf of the Appken 649 Madison LLC. We're here for a continuing hearing with regard to property at 649 Madison Ave., lot 2509, Lot 5. Just to refresh everybody's recollection as to this application, the property, as you know, is in the CBD redevelopment area, the CBD mixed-use district. It's an existing building that is two stories. The lot size is 3,333 square feet. We're looking to add a third floor to the building. We've gone through a number of revisions of plans, and we're here tonight to present our latest revisions. After having gone before the Design Review Committee, I think we've come up with a plan. I think the members of the Design Review Committee would agree that takes care of some of the concerns and considerations of the board members as expressed at the prior hearings. So with that being said, I think we can go right to the revised plans and testimony from our architect, Daniel Condatore.
Okay. Dan, please unmute yourself and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear a testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name for the record and spell it.
Sure, Daniel Condatore, C-O-N-D-A-T-O-R-E.
Okay, and if I may, before Mr. Condatore starts his testimony, I'd like to have Doug and Michael Sworn as board professionals. Gentlemen, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your names for the record, starting with Doug, and give us your affiliation with the board, please.
Sure, Douglas Quelland, Insight Engineering, Board Engineer.
Thank you.
Michael Sullivan, Clark Hinton, hints, Planning Board Planner.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, the floor is yours, Mr. Caris.
Thank you. Dan, what I'd like to do is go through some of the revisions that we've made to the plans, and also, I know we have some renderings that we'll be able to show the board tonight. So why don't we pull up on the screen the revised plans? We're going to identify that. Jack, I'm trying to think what exhibit.
Let me see here, I see A3.
Before.
Perhaps A3 was your last exhibit?
I think A3B, so we're on A4 then.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to mark this document up on the screen. The plans, architectural plans revised at the last revision date of March 4th of 2022.
Correct. Okay. Got that, Irene? Okay, good.
And let's take a look at what we have up on the board, and let's go through these plans. And if you could explain to the board the changes that we've made. First, do a general overview of what we're looking at, and then let's explain the revisions that we've made to the plans.
Sure, so this is the submitted, our latest submitted set that, as you mentioned, is dated March 4th, 2022. The bubble changes here specifically reference the updates that we made post the DRC meeting. I believe the last hearing, we, I did present changes to the third floor elevation, but we can kind of quickly kind of bring that all together and walk through everything. Okay, so right here, it's just a simple cover sheet. I'll dive more into the elevation. If you recall, so we'll just walk through the floor plans again. The last time I presented, I talked about some of the updates to the basement that would be used primarily for storage utilities. And then in the back area is where we had our refuse area that would be closed in, vented, and would have individual cans. You know, we mentioned that during the course of operation, there would be a building manager who would come down to the basement and bring those cans out for pickup on likely a bi-weekly basis. So all that, we had enough capacity within the basement to include that trash area. And there wasn't any kind of tenant operation down there aside from storage that would be used for the first floor tenant and then the tenants above. Here we have, to the right of that, is Level 2. That's just the the ground floor plan where we all know it says existing tenant space. I think we're all familiar.
Just to be clear, that's Level 1, am I correct?
That's Level 1, that's correct. I think we're all familiar at this point what is going in there. The killer prize is, you know, soon to be open. They've had their permit, and they've been completing their work, pretty much finished with their work and getting ready to open. And we have some existing bathrooms. We have a new entrance lobby in the back for the office space that's going to be on the second and third floor and the proposed elevator. So it's pretty straightforward. And then on the second floor is an existing second floor area that we're converting into, you know, shared or office space. So we have multiple office space along a central corridor, and we're installing new bathrooms. And then the stair continues up to what is the third floor. So this is the addition that's going on top. You can see just, you know, a configuration of small offices, space for rental purposes, windows and glazing on three sides of the building, the connection to the elevator, fairly straightforward with a double-loaded corridor. And then here, what we're showing is the roof plan with the mechanical units located, you know, 10 feet off the roof edge. The existing grease duct for the restaurant that would be extended up to the roof area. I wasn't updated on the plans, but I think we provided testimony last time that we would be able to screen this on the east side, since there's that open parking lot, and you can see those rooftop units. So we'd be willing to provide screening here sufficient enough. We don't have anything large, so it would be minimal. But along the east, the early side, we'd be able to provide that. Now, what we're looking at, scrolling to the next page, is the, you know, the two-sided elevations, the 2D elevations. I believe last time, one of the big comments before we presented the elevations was, you know, kind of the inconsistency of the window type and the rhythm that we were creating on this third floor and how it really didn't have any type of relationship to what was going on before. There was different types of windows and sizes, and there were some inconsistencies that we felt we would be able to clean up. And that's what you're seeing reflected here, where we have a consistent window type, and we use the rhythm of the window bays below to create this new rhythm of windows in a more contemporary fashion as to juxtapose it against the historical, well, not historical, but the existing building below. Another point we talked about was there's a door in the back, and our original plans was being removed because that's where the elevator shaft is going to be. We felt to be consistent with the existing building architecture that we'd be able to leave that door in that back left corner on Bond Street in place, and we would wall it in from the back to maintain the architecture. The architecture along Bond Street is consistent. The existing windows and all these bays are the original windows, which are being, you know, painted and refurbished. We didn't need to replace, for egress reasons, we did have to replace the doors. One of the comments from the DRC that was implemented was that, you know, updating the door in the front, we wanted to have consistency. So we had previously a heavier door. We had a door that had the styles or the trim around it roughly four to five inches on the top and the bottom. We wanted more light, lighted glass within that framework. So we're replacing that door with something more thin. It'll allow more light in, a little something sleeker than what was there.
Can you zoom in on that door, Mr. Condatore? Thank you.
And we have also renderings. I'll be able to show in the renderings.
Thank you.
So, and another point was that the door that is installed there now, it was a clear anodized gray finish. And based on our meeting with the DRC, we've committed to, you know, paint every, the frame and the door frame white to be consistent with the frames of the existing architecture. So that was the update on the Bond Street. On Madison Avenue. I think we'll go through it more because, I mean, these don't represent very well what the architecture looks like. So I'll just briefly tell you what we did, and then we can kind of go back and get to how we got there when we look at the rendering, if that's okay with everybody. But what we're doing is, one of the comments, and people felt pretty strongly about, in the original windows that were here, there was more of a separation or a divide, a difference between the top round window and a rectangular window below. And what we proposed and what we've worked with the DRC on is kind of re-implementing that mass and that thickness to show that definition between the window above and the window below. And not to do it in a way of mimicking, but to do it in a way that is consistent with the style and the modern windows that it's currently in place. So we, we've, you know, able to expand that horizontal mullion to be more consistent with that brick masonry that was originally behind there. And again, updating the window, the doors to have a thinner style, more consistent with the style and framework of the storefront. So the doors felt more in line with what's happening across the entire elevation instead of being these heavier or bulky doors that we had originally represented. And again, we'll see that within the rendering itself. For the most part, I mean, those were all the changes that we made to the plans based on the DRC and what we presented the last time. So what I can do now is I can pull up the elevations, renderings that we put together to show that kind of final outcome of what we did.
Before we get to that, I just want to touch upon the wall that fences that parking lot, which is the wall on the easterly, I guess that would be the easterly side of the building that you have the arrow on right now, east elevation.
Yeah.
For the board's identification, there is an application that is going to be submitted to put a mural there before the committee that considers that. And we have no objection to any condition requiring, in order to fill that in, to place a mural within the side of that building. Go ahead.
Okay. That's not the right one. That's, hold on a second. Neither one of those are the right ones.
If you go down.
Yeah, that's not correct. For some reason, that's not the right elevation. Why is that not correct? Sorry about that. Let me try to pull this up. I have it. I just don't know what to do with it. Okay. So these are the, these are the elevations that reflect what we created when we met with the DRC.
Let's mark this exhibit, these renderings, as A5 for identification. Those are the renderings presented to the DRC, correct?
These are the, yes. Well, these, we presented options, and then we met, and then based on that meeting, we generated these, which I believe we circulated last week.
Yeah, so just to clarify, Dan and Mr. Caris, we have renderings from the DRC that had notes on them.
Yes.
And then we have this packet of renderings, which was circulated as supplemental exhibit for this meeting.
Let's do this, yeah, let's mark these as the supplemental renderings following the DRC meeting.
Okay, so this will be A5 supplemental renderings. All right, thank you.
Can I just ask, this is Jen Souter. Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
And thank you. Irene had helped me sort throughout this, but the board members that were not on the DRC, I'm so sorry about the background noise, did not hear, did not see that notated version, obviously. And so the version, the package that we're looking at now, it was hard to distinguish which, because there was no notations for each image. So just so, those board members that weren't at the DRC, I was fortunate to see the ones, because Irene sent them to me, but that showed what the differences were between. Anyway, it just was a little bit unclear to me when I first reviewed the package.
We can bring that up. We can mark that as A6. The renderings that were presented to the DRC, let's go through what we came up with, and then we'll go back to show what was presented and then the differences.
Thank you.
You could do that. So I'll make sure this is the right one. Okay, so when we met with the DRC prior to, we put together three options to show them based on different levels, basically starting with something as minimal, then kind of increasing and adding and putting things together. So the first option that we presented is what you see here was really simply just taking the existing gray storefront. We had the storefront, well, it's black, sorry, I apologize. The storefront that you see today as being black was just to simply take that storefront and paint it white to be more consistent with the white windows that are along Bond Street. So that was the simple thing, paint the door, paint the storefront, leave everything in place the way it was, you know, and no physical modifications in that regard. So looking at these images, there'll be a couple of images for each one. I'll go through them. You'll see what we presented. So here is that storefront again with the, you know, this is that heavier door that I was telling you about, and then the other door painting that out white and, you know, and bringing more harmony along the facade here. So that's the first option. And these are all still the same option. I'll go through it slowly so you get a chance to see it. The second option was kind of going back to that horizontal band, some of the detail work that was in the original windows. So what we did was we painted it white, but at the same time, we reintroduced the horizontal, the mass, the horizontal break between the windows, but we did it in a more ornate way to kind of bring in some of the historic architectural detail. So, you know, if I zoomed in, you'll see that we added some dentil work. We kind of have a freeze board, and then we have another trim mullion below. And it just, we thought that might be an option to kind of, you know, tie everything together with the glazed opening and the amount of light, but still bring that mass horizontally across for that separation, and the doors stayed in place. So I'll just scroll through those. You can see it here better, some of the depth to it and how it would, you know, be detailed in front of that existing storefront system. Again, just kind of like the final image there. You can see it there, going along horizontally. And then the third option was leaving that horizontal detail work, painting it white, and then the windows on Bond Street had this fan-style muttons and mullions that we would apply to the front windows to kind of tie those arch windows together. Very simple to do, and, you know, we presented that this way. And you can see here, there's the fans above these existing windows that is remaining in place. Although in not exactly the same proportions, you know, we felt maybe introducing that would, you know, you know, bring everything and tie everything together. So those were the three options that we had presented, and then we had our meeting and discussed them. And from that feedback, we've got to, I'll flip to where we are now, and then I'll kind of talk about, and people, obviously, the members that were on the DRC can also share their thoughts in that regard. So I think the, one of the biggest, the strongest comments from our meeting was that, you know, you wanted to make modifications. You wanted to feel better, you know, more harmonious with the building, but at the same time, it was very clear that nobody wanted to try to mimic the existing architecture because it was just a weak effort in a sense to try to take this large amount of glazing in this more contemporary-style storefront glazing and, you know, apply, you know, more historic, like, add-ons to it to kind of recover that architecture. Everybody felt that that wasn't going to be where we wanted to be, right? But there was importance in the sense of proportions in the way those windows were broken down. And then the other, the big point was, you know, that the door, the entrance door, the amount of openness and the glazing on these first two, to have that kind of heavy door in there was, you know, losing the balance of the elevation and. losing the balance of the elevation and they felt that we, if we were able to create that large horizontal band and, you know, bring transparency and more consistency along this elevation and then also replacing the door on Bond Street, that that would, that would be the best effort moving forward. So we're not, you know, obviously we have the windows that are the storefront that's in there. It's important to us that we bring in the natural light into that, that tenant volume. They really want that openness for, for their business. And we also really, you know, when we add new elements to, you know, to historic buildings, you know, we, we tend not to try to mimic the, the architecture that's there. But we also want to kind of be harmonious with, you know, the, the building. So this is, you know, where we landed as far as a design aesthetic. And I'll just scroll through the images that you see here. There's that other door that's replaced here on Bond Street. All of this is staying in place and kind. So all this is existing. And you get, I, I think you, you could feel the rhythm of the building. You know, vertically and horizontally as it goes across along the street. Again, another perspective. I just wanted to see if, now you can see it here.
All right.
There's that red door. There's that red, again, just that red door in the back. I think originally we had some of this detail work was being removed, but we're not going to remove that. We're able to save that in the back.
The, the, go back one second.
Yep, sure.
See some lighting up on the building. Is that going to remain?
Yes, all the existing lighting is going to remain in place. So this is, this is where we ended up based on our, our meeting.
If, if I may, I would like, since we have all the board members here, I would, I would mind hearing from them if they prefer this type of design versus the one that was prior on option two with, that has a thicker door. So that we can
Yeah.
all agree or not agree as to what we would prefer.
Okay.
I understand that DRC suggested this, but I would still like to have other people's opinion.
Well, I, I, I like the, I like the alternative before, but with the lighter door because I agree the door, the heavier door on the Madison Avenue frontage doesn't fit in and this fits in more. I mean, you know, the old windows are gone, you know, we, we lost some elements here, right? The, the glazing was behind the brick wall. So you had the, the brick arch that's gone. The pediment above the windows and the doors are gone. You know, I think the prior design that you showed that went in front of the committee was better where you had the mullions you try, because to me this front doesn't look like it belongs to the side of the building. It looks like two different buildings. So I understand, you know, it's not Main Street, USA, Disney, you know, you try to recreate everything. I mean, you know, sure, it would be better if the, if the glass was pushed back. We're not going to get that recess anymore. But I think the prior design with the new doors looks better and fits in more with the side of the building.
Which prior design, I just want to.
The one that you just showed that we had the mullions.
Yeah. Option two.
Three.
Option two. Right. So we had that, but with the, but with the new lighter door.
This one.
No, no.
This one?
No, down, no, down. Go down. The one with the, the one with the, that's it. This one. I like this, but with the light, with the lighted doors.
When you say light, you're talking about the thinner frame on the doors.
The, the frame that you have in the last. Because, you know, now the windows match. You know, you created cornice, you know, we had pediments before on the front, right? So you're almost creating that recess there. You know, you're not getting the pediments back, but at least now the top of the window, the fanned windows match the side.
That's interesting that, that that was one thing that I think that all the DRC members were clear about that they did not want that one.
Yeah, I, I think that in the DRC, the question centered around. There was a certain approach that the architect told us they took here with deliberately choosing contrasting materials for the contemporary parts. And we felt that trying to recreate historic elements might end up not really, you know, hitting the mark. And so allowing the the, the option that we selected, which is what is currently on the screen, I believe this is kind of like option two A. Sort of balanced the, the proportions and the thickness in the right places, but didn't try to recreate historic fabric, which we felt we can't base the outcome on the rendering. You know.
I understand you asked for personal opinion. So I mean, you know, I think, I think the front looks like a different building.
I agree with Dan.
I agree with Dan too.
I, I too think that the fan window with the fits in better than the last option. I, I think there's something that he said for some continuity from the windows on the side and in the front of the building.
And what are your feelings about what the door should look like? The thinner door or the bulkier door?
I like the thinner door.
Now that, that's another option. That's an option four. To have. No, it's, it's fine. I'm, we're just talking here. Anybody else have an opinion? Because it sounds as though Dan and Yvonne are speaking to, I guess that was our option three that we had and with a thinner door. That's another consideration. Anybody else have?
Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry. I kept talking over Yvonne because I'm trying to navigate this sound here.
I have a question also.
Do you want to go? I'm sorry. No, I, that's why I had asked to see the options prior to the meeting because I, my first, the first thing I looked at was why, I was trying to understand why we weren't continuing the to continue keeping the mullions in the front. And I understand the description of why and why the committee may have felt that way, but I felt there is so much going on in this building. It's, I mean, there's so many things happening that having consistency there would help because the first thing that jumped out at me was how different the facades look. Because even I understand, I understand the idea of not trying to mimic, but just around the corner. You know, people don't know the story of the building as to why, why this is happening. And I think it looks really disjointed the way it is.
Listen, I'm only the attorney and by, by far, I'm not an architect. My personal view, I agree. I happen to like the additional detail with the dental molding and the fan up top with the thinner door. But it's clearly, you know, it's up to the board, but that's just my two cents with it.
Juanita, I think that you're.
I do have a question. Well, I have an opinion and a question. I, I do like the thinner door and I do like mimicking the fan work in the top part of the door, the rounded part. But I have a question on the facade side. Why is it that that Easter, east window on the front, the third one down is glass at the bottom instead of brick like the rest of the windows?
There was a door previously there.
Because, because that would make it look more consistent if it was brick all the way around on the bottom.
However, that door that was previously there used to be a window.
I have to go back. I, I, I'm not saying you're right.
The historic photographs, it's one door and two windows on that facade.
Did it have brick along the bottom of all the way around?
It did, but many years before this applicant owned the building, it was converted to a door. The window, the, the eastern window was converted to a door.
Yes, Eric, but while they did that, the westerly opening now that is the door, that used to be the window. If you look at the CCH report, how you look at the existing, I'm sorry, the prior condition, the view of the original building, the door was on the right hand side and there were two windows. And
That's what I.
Just to, just to throw this out to you, this does not comply with the guidelines. If you're trying to make this reasonably compliant with the guidelines, let's take another look at the guidelines then. I, I agree with putting the, the fan mullions above the windows. And I think Juanita has a very good point about bringing the brick all the way across if that's where going to use that as a window. What you're basically doing is reversing the facade from left to right from what it was back originally.
Yeah, but you never, you never matched the brick though.
Well, that's but you're replacing the middle with a different brick.
Where, where? No, I think, isn't that, isn't that the existing brick?
Yeah. That's correct.
That's correct. So the, the door, the doors, the condition of the front was changed far before this applicant owned the building.
That's true. But the, the doors were changed from one location to the other.
No, there were, there were doors on the left side currently. There are red doors.
Yes, but you, if you're talking about when the, if, if you're talking about the easterly window, when it was a door, that was in nobody's memory. Go back to the page. Page four of CCH's report. That shows you what the existing condition, the original condition was. The door was on the right.
Oh, there's a door behind that tree. Yeah, there's, there's.
That's a door.
The door.
That's a door.
Yes, that's correct.
There were two doors. Okay, so it was balanced.
All right. So does any, does anybody else on the board have any, any thoughts about the fan work or no fan work? Thinner door?
I would, Mr. Condator.
Yep.
Could you describe the process for creating that, like, for the edification of the board? Could you describe how you intend to recreate that grill work? Because I will come out and say that my concern is that while you are able to represent it in this rendering, the finished product may not have the same quality, depth and expression as the original. So you're not creating segmented windows. I'm going to let you testify to how you create that effect.
Yeah, so there's, there's companies, one company is called Bacon, and there's several other where we would have to have, have a custom fan grill put on here, but it's, it is applied. So they, they would have to get a template and they would have to cut them out. And then they would be applied. There'd be some depth of them, but it would be right. It wouldn't be a true divided light. And in the sense that this is insulated glass, so when you do insulate a glass and you, you, you know, you're going to put divided light on, they put spacers in between the glass. So there's a consistency. You would not, you wouldn't have that here, right? That would, you would have something applied to the face. And then we could try to apply something to the backside, but then when you look at it, you could see the glass is, 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 would be consistent.
Right, but how high? I, I understand that because, you know, it's later. But how high, high up are those windows? So I mean, you have to, you, you have to look sideways between, you know, between the mullions to see the space between them.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's hard to say how visible it would be, but he, that, I, you know, I was just explaining, that's how it would be done now.
Is that 10 feet up?
Yeah, it's 10 feet up. Yes.
Anybody else on the board have an opinion as to the fan work and the, and the door? Anyone else? Okay, Rick, John?
This is Rick. I I think the facade as it is right now is just a little too bare of any kind of detail. It seems really stripped down. I understand the issue with the separation between the two panes with the, the mullions or the whatever it is is placed on there, but I, I don't, I don't see that as being a significant issue. I do have a question about the, the horizontal bands and how that's going to be articulated. I know you mentioned something about some dentals and how the, the proposed design of those horizontal bands kind of relates to any of the detail on the western facade. Are you, are you getting any kind of like architectural elements from, you know, the existing windows to kind of articulate that or just maybe you could elaborate a little bit more about what, what that's proposed?
So what we would have to propose something, and this is a little bit trickier than actually the, the mullions itself is. That would go in front of the glass, right? Because we're not going to be able to apply this to the frame. And we would use a proportion. So the proportions that and the size of the, of the work along Bond Street is not the, the same as the size there. So we have to kind of take that detail work, the dental work and the basics of, of the style and kind of scale it proportionally to work with the, with the, the larger pieces that are in the front.
You're saying this is, this is going to be applied. It's not, it's not actually two separate windows. It's just one.
It's going to be applied to it. Yes.
Okay.
I mean, there's no way to, I mean.
I, I understand now. I, I, that's not what I understood initially. I thought it was going to be two separate windows.
Basically anchor it on either side of the window, likely to the, to the brick area and.
Would you also have the horizontal band on the inside as well? Or would it just be on the exterior?
It would be on the exterior, but we would, we would need to apply something to the back of the glass. So when you're in the store, when you're looking out that you don't.
There's an existing horizontal band there now.
Why can't it go on the band? Can you zoom in on the band? I don't know how high the, where does the door end?
Is it? The door, the door ends here.
All right. So is there not enough room on that band to, to put what you have in the cornice?
That band, this band is being, so this band that we're proposing is, and it will be a piece of extruded metal that ties into the existing store, the storefront that's there now. Right now, currently the band that's on there is, is no more than eight inches, right? It's just a, it's like a, you know, a thick, a thicker storefront mullion. So.
Yes. So originally it was like, there was brick horizontal base, but all that brick is gone now, right?
Yeah, there's some, yeah, it, it's.
There's a concrete band that's still that the brick was attached to that is still existing.
Well, why don't you go back to the drawing where you proposed it? Can you go back to that?
Yeah, I was in the store.
So that so isn't that the same? I mean, that looks like that begins at the band, you know, on top of those two windows. It looks like it begins with, you know, at that band that you have.
Yes, it does. But that band currently is not as thick as this band that's showing. It's thinner.
No, I know, but it's, it's, it's sort of, I mean, it's, it's not being applied to the window, right? Is that, is that going past the glazing?
Yes, it would go past the glazing because we're going to, you're going to carry it past the window opening to, you know, return it to the corners to the brick, right? You, it's going to be slightly wider than the window opening itself.
Why? Is it, is there not just enough space to, to go to the bottom of the window and not, not go over the glazing? In other words, the space above what you have, I, I don't know structurally what you're changing.
But, but, but does that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but does that truly matter? I'm just asking because I don't understand where we're going.
It might because I don't know if it gives the same look because now, you know, here it's showing, you know, it's showing the window except with the, the fanning in there, the mullions, you know, about the same size as the, the other that they projected. So I, I don't know how much of the window it's going to cover. Is it, is it going to shorten the window, the top window then?
The top window would be, yeah, the, you're not shortening the window. The, the window is still going to remain in place behind this, but it will be shorter.
So one of the things I, I, I agree with the DRC is maybe not having so much detail in this horizontal band because it's, it's almost like you're trying to recreate some kind of historical element. But maybe a more contemporary interpretation of that band where it's not quite so like not denticulated and, you know, maybe a little bit less flourished or articulated design, whereas you still get the three dimensional quality of the horizontal band, but it's not quite so detailed.
Yeah, forget about the dental.
Yeah.
All right. So, so it sounds, it sounds to me, because I think we've heard of anybody, if anybody hasn't spoken yet, please raise your hand and we can make sure that we hear you.
Well, it, it's more, I didn't.
Uh, it it's more, I didn't speak.
Go ahead.
And I don't have to raise my hand. I apologize.
No problem.
Uh. So in general, I'm gonna say, like, listen to Jenny, Von, Dan, Juanita and Jim. I'm in agreement, uh, with different things they said about their entire aspect. Uh, to me, the windows they, they, they shouldn't be flush. They should be recessed because to match the rest of the building. Uh, and again, this is something like, like, you know, we've come a little ways, but I think we still have a ways to go. And there's one thing I'm gonna just say is John Moore being common sense. Uh, as much as like, I've been on here and years ago, I learned the word mullions, I learned this word. There's, there's five or six participants, they might even not even have a clue what that word means or any of these words mean. So I think there should be better explanations when people start using words like that. And again, right, right now, I I'm not happy with the design because of what other people have said. And again, uh, the windows just don't strike me as being flushed when the rest of the building isn't. Thank you.
I think that's kind of a good comment, John. Maybe give it, it gives it a little bit more three dimensional quality by having the windows and the doors kind of recessed a bit so that it does kind of, uh, relate to the western facade.
And then, I mean, I, I, one of the, I think the things that we kind of brought up during the DRC and Andy, we wanna chime in is you know, those, those types of moves would, would entail us, you know, taking out the windows. And, and I felt that during that meeting, that was something that wasn't, you know, gonna be kind of gone that direction. So, I mean, I I I don't know, you know, the, the glasses.
I apologize. I apologize. Totally wrong. You already took out a bunch of windows and doors, and now all of a sudden we're concerned about what we're gonna do with the rest of them.
Yeah.
I mean, just disingenuous.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that we, I'm just saying that that was something that I felt that the direction that the DRC, you know, we talked about going in that direction. Now, yes.
You can do that. Before the DRC, the conversation went to adding certain architectural elements um, to that side, that facade of the building, um, which we've done with numerous options. I thought we had a very good meeting with the DRC, presented a whole bunch of different options. Um, we came up with the design, but the other options are still on the table, obviously, to discuss. Um, but in terms of removing, um, all the windows and the doors at this point, I just don't see that as an option. Um, we're trying to work with the board, certainly with the DRC, to try to get this to a point where we can all agree upon. Um, and I think we've come a long way.
Well, that was because, you know, you removed the windows and doors to begin with.
Which, which we got.
Disagreement, and we had a disagreement. The board and you and your client disagree whether you should have been allowed to do that, whether this is subject to the historical preservation. We went through that at the last meeting.
Just so we're clear about it, we got permits to be able to do that. I don't think we need to go down that road again.
I, I agree.
Clear.
I agree. We're not going to go down that road again. The question is, is that what is the design that we can agree upon to move forward? I'm hearing that a number of people like the fan work and the mullions and like the band to be less ornate. The question is, is that is the door thicker or the thinner door? I'm hearing a lot that people would like the thinner door.
I think the thinner door.
I've, I've heard that from like Yvonne. I've heard that from Jim. Uh, I've heard, I, I, I've heard that that door, people would like the thinner door. So it sounds as.
Same here.
Okay, so it sounds as though the options are having, whether we have that fan work, alright, we call them mullions. I'm not sure what we're calling them, but to add that, what's on this picture right now, to add those and a thinner door is one option. Another option is what was proposed on what was agreed to, um, with the DRC.
And this is Jen Sauter again. I just wanted to, um, make sure that, because my understanding was that, I I realize all those options that you just described are still options, but the option two, um, that, which is what I believe the design review committee settled on, you know, came back with. Just correct me if I'm wrong, but that does have the, um, additional, uh, or, yes, that does have those ornate. Right. Just because it, just to make sure that everyone knows what was in which options.
Right. It just has a horizontal band that doesn't have any decoration to it.
Right, this one, we agreed on, uh, we agreed that it would be not ornate, that that band would not be an ornate band, just like Rick had suggested. Uh, we had agreed to that also, and with the thinner door. But we did not agree to the fan work. If, I'm guessing that, that's the fan work that we're talking about, to replicate what's on the west side? That.
Yeah.
That's the thing that, that the DRC did not agree to. So that's why we want to talk about it, to say, what do we want to propose? Is the answer here, so that we can have an agreement. And it may end up being a vote.
Um, but the, and just, I, I know, I'm sorry, I'm so annoyed about this, but the, those options, so when there's that call out on the note, Dan, it showed, um, that the option two, that's right in front of us on the screen here, if you blow that up, that's just showing the wider. No ornate, no historical.
I'm sorry, this is not, uh, I don't believe that this is option two.
No, this is like, uh.
It's option one, isn't it?
No, this is, this is like, you say, I can say four, right? It's the last one. I presented three options originally. This is a follow-up option after the first three options.
Right.
There seems to be three elements. There's the door, the size of the doors, or the, you know, the thickness of the doors, the fan light at the, at the arched window, and then the horizontal band.
Right.
So we have an agreement on this on the doors. Everyone thinks the door should be thinner. The horizontal band. Um.
There are three options with that. There is the plain band, the more ornate, or just getting rid of the dental molding on the more ornate.
Yeah, so that, that's like, it's, so it's a three dimensional quality, but it's not as ornate as the den- dentals. Yeah, that's, okay, so that's the one that I vote for, for that element. And then there's a, the general consensus is that we want the fan light, the, uh, mullions and the, the arched window. Is that correct?
That, that is, that is what is on the table at this point, with or without the mullions.
Well, I just wanted to ask, um, one more thing, because I heard, uh, Eric's comment. I understand what Eric was saying about the, like, how when they're applied and it's not, um, divided, you know, they're not true divided light windows. But I agree also that the fact that they're that high, I, I actually, I went through this for a year with my house, because I, I understand that, like, the it, when you're up close, I understand the concern that it looks sort of, if you use the word cheesy, or, you know, you can tell that it's not real. It's not really doing what those are meant to do in the world. Um, however, I agree that just because of the consistency with the side of the building, when you're walking across the street or you're walking into that building, you're not gonna be able to tell that. I mean, if you, if you're an architect, you would notice, but just walking by, you're not gonna say, oh, those aren't true divided light. Um, I understand Eric's concern that how they are actually constructed, if it's not done well, they couldn't, they might not look, um, you know, perfect. Uh, sometimes they can, yeah, just not look perfect. But I don't, uh, to me, it, the overriding factor is having that consistency is more important to me than the concern of those looking or knowing that they're applied and not true divided light.
Can I ask a question of the architect?
Sure.
So the, the, the side window, the, the pediments on the side windows, on the side, they don't have dentals, right, under the, underneath?
There's some dental work there, yeah.
There is, uh, because I was looking at the street scene and I didn't see any. And you, you're not like, I, I don't know what you call it, in the front, in the front pediment, the masonry pediment. What, what are those? Yeah, the brackets, corbels, you, they, they're still being retained and everything, right?
Yeah, nothing's, I mean, obviously, we, we can't model that top to perfection, uh, based on access to it. But yes, nothing is changing on the top pediment from where the top of those columns are, even the, well, the columns are not changing either. But everything up, up top there is all remaining in, in place.
So you're just cleaning and repairing as it needs to be, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Alright, so can we, um, I'm guessing that in the, in the way of fairness, uh, to get everyone's, uh, opinion
I don't see any.
on here, I'm going to propose that, that we put forward a vote to say, do you agree or do you not agree in that, in the design that it sounds as though most of us want? So I'm gonna ask for that to kind of get us a feel for where we, where we are here.
If I may, maybe I can characterize it. You can correct me.
Go ahead.
Uh, it would be the, what, what it sounds to me is you're gonna vote on three different elements, as Rick outlined. One would be the mullions in the windows on Madison as proposed. Uh, I guess that was option two. Uh, the second would be the thinner doors on both Madison and Bond Street, which may have been in option three, whichever the option is, doesn't matter, but they're the thinner doors. And third, uh, you're contemplating having the band that's proposed on Madison be ornate, however, not too ornate and perhaps omit the, or our, not perhaps, but omit the dental molding that was originally proposed to tone it down a bit.
Right, we want the thicker one, that's, that's not as ornate, but it has, it has, has no dental. You're right, Jack. So those are the three.
Yeah.
I think that we should not mention which options they are, because differences here.
Okay.
So if, if you don't mind, I would like to take a vote to see if people agree or do not agree. And then, you know, if, if we don't have a, uh, a consensus, then we have to keep talking.
Barbara, could I ask, this is Jen Sauter again. Could I ask one that we could see the, because again, the board didn't see all the options until today now? The three, the one that you were just showing, that shows the, um, the molding and the mullions. So we can see that again.
Sure. Alright, if we could see that first option, um, Daniel?
There's one.
Yes, but we wanted it not to be, not to have the dental work there.
Well, yeah, that's what I wanted to see. And, and the way that that's, um, designed there is that, that's not based on anything on the, um, the west side, on the bangs ab side. Meaning the little, the, the.
No, you're right.
No, I'm just asking. I don't know if it is or not.
No, I, I, you know, I, I did go back and look. It, it, there is no dental work per se on, on Bond. I thought there was dental work up in the, in the, um, the gable. So, um, you know, the dentals are, you know, irrelevant. I mean, I guess in the sense that, you know, the ornateness of the stepping and the crowning, uh, is on the other side. Um, but, I mean, this can be minimized.
I think you've answered a question.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the key to that horizontal band is just to give it a three dimensional quality, not just have it flush with the surface of the windows.
Right. Okay, so here's, that's.
I'm, I'm sorry, Barbara, just, uh, so I guess it's a question to Barbara and Jack. And I'm just being very conservative. Should we be taking any vote without asking, like, the public's been on, without public feedback?
Yeah, that's, come here, so I can talk to you without turning my head. Alright, so what you need to do is take the.
Juanita, we need to.
Juanita, you're not, you'll hear you.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry.
It's okay. Alright, John, what were you stating?
Should we be taking any vote on any issue, not just this project, on anything where the public's been on without asking public comments first?
Um, let me just say that, um, the only thing here is, is that I don't believe, Daniel, are you finished with your presentation?
Yeah, I don't, no, I was finished with the presentation, yes.
Alright, so who is going to respond to the CCH document and the insight document?
Insight, I don't think we have an updated report from.
No, but, but we still have to reply to it.
I, I thought we went through that all at the last.
Yeah.
And we hit the report, we hit the other report, the CCH report at the last hearing also. I believe we've covered the comments with the revisions, on the architectural revisions.
Let me find out first if Michael feels the same way about the CCH report. Do you feel that we've hit everything? Because we do have to have the public, and I get that. Uh, but I was trying to separate it out, but if we feel that we should have it, then we have to finish up the CCH discussion as well to close out Daniel's, um, testimony.
Well, um, let me say this, uh, we did update our report based on the, uh, drawings that were submitted and the renderings submitted post DRC review meeting. Um, Daniel, going through the testimony tonight, has explained the, um, proposed changes as they've envisioned them. Um, it remains to be seen exactly which of the options the board, um, prefers, assuming that there will be a series of options the board prefers. But, um, essentially, we've, we've laid out how this complies with the design guidelines and the guidance in the redevelopment plan, as well as the UEZ guidelines. And, um, the degree to which it's consistent, um, and conforming i- is, is in our report. I don't think that the testimony changes that. This is the proposal, and this is what they feel has, um, evolved based on the DRC review. So, um, uh, they've addressed it, um, in terms of whatever they intended or could address. Uh, there are outstanding, um, uh, inconsistencies with the design guidelines and some exceptions. But I don't believe that this, um, uh, unless the board requires wholesale, uh, revisions to this, would they ever meet those requirements? So I think to, long way around, I think they've addressed them to the greatest extent they planned to, uh, and in accordance with the DRC recommendations. Is that fair to say, Mr. Karis?
It is fair to say, thank you.
Alright, so shall we, uh, does the, um, do our professionals or the planning board have any other questions before we go to the public? No? Alright, Irina, let's open it to the public.
Okay, um, so if anyone from the public would like to ask questions of the testimony that's just recently been heard um, for this evening only, please raise your hand by dialing star nine on your telephone or pressing the raise hand button on the Zoom application. Alright, and I have one hand raised. Um, city historian, go ahead and ask your question.
Uh, good evening, folks. Warner Baumgartner here. Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, Warner. Thank you.
Just testing the audio. Um, just a point of order first and process. Irina mentioned, uh, cross-examination on this testimony only. But I will raise the issue that at the last meeting, um, that was carried without any questions being permitted of the testimony given at the last meeting.
Well, then you can ask questions of both.
Oh, okay, great.
Unless, unless, of course, the gentleman has corrected something or changed it, you could certainly ask it. But please do not dwell on something that's been changed to the satisfaction of you or anyone else.
Sure, sure. Um, I, I'm just gonna re- refresh my memory and maybe the memory of the applicant and the board. I think there was testimony at the last meeting that they felt they were not, um, required to, um, follow the design standards, uh, as published in the redevelopment, uh, plan. Uh, was, was that the, uh, the position that was taken, my recollection?
Are you asking for a legal conclusion or a?
Asking about your testimony from the last meeting, uh, but whether my recollection of that is correct, that you were, uh, putting forth that you believed you did not have to follow the design standards as published in the redevelopment plan.
Now, my position last time is that the design guidelines to which there can be waivers, um, if the board so, is so inclined.
I see, okay.
Comply, in other words, are we saying compliance with some and request for waivers for others? Correct. Yeah.
Uh-huh. And, and which, which of the elements that are currently being discussed would be waivers?
I believe all of them.
All of them.
I don't, I don't. Unless there are bulk standards that are not being complied with, those would be variances. Design guidelines within the plan and so on. Design guidelines within the plan and so on have historically, since the inception of the CBD plan, have been handled as design exceptions. So there would be no reason to change that at this point.
Uh huh, uh huh. Okay. Um, what is the current state of this facade? I, I heard mention of the lack of desire to remove the windows that have been put in. Is, is that to imply that the front has already been reassembled?
The front, the front is, new windows were put in and new doors on the Madison outside.
Oh, I see. So, so the, the existing condition is that these window and door assemblies are already installed?
That is correct, to which permits had been obtained.
And, and a permit for that was given by who?
Building Department.
Was there a zoning compliance certificate issued for that?
That's the building department's procedure, whatever they had to do was up to them, but we got permits that are valid, permits to put in the, uh, windows and the doors.
Well, that wasn't my question. My question was,
When I'm answering your question, that, that's up to the building department in terms of their procedures. When somebody applies for a building permit, what they have to do, my understanding is that they go to the zoning department for zoning compliance. But you would have to check with the building department on that.
Do you, do you have such a certificate in your possession?
We have plans that have been marked as approved.
I, I, I'm a little disappointed you're beating around the bush. It's either,
I'm not beating around the bush. I'm giving you a very direct answer. We got approved plans that are stamped.
That's not my question. My question is, do you have a certificate of zoning compliance?
As I indicated to you, we got approved plans and we got permits that were issued to do the work.
Okay, that's clearly beating around the bush. I'll move on.
No, I'll help you out here because we're going to go round and round for the next hour.
It's okay, Jack. I'll move on.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Okay. Um, so, so these existing structures that were put into these openings, um, are they essentially flush with the front face of the brickwork?
Dan, you can answer that.
The storefront? That is put in?
The assemblies that were put in, in the, in the front openings, are they essentially flush?
Not exactly flush, they're, they're set back an inch or two.
An inch or two. Okay. And, and what would be the difficulty of recessing them further as per the, how the originals were to create more depth?
Do need to take them out, reas- and put them back in and set them back.
Okay. So it is possible to do that?
Sure. I mean, yeah.
Okay. Um, you had testified also that you thought it was a good idea to have the front differentiated from the historic side. What is, what is the, uh, the philosophical reason for that? It would seem that the building would be better as a contiguous piece of architecture, not a disjointed one.
Well, our, our, our purpose, for just several reasons why we have the amount of glass. One, um, we have a tenant that is different than the previous original building, which was a bank. And as a part of the downtown, we tried to introduce glazing along, uh, streets like Madison and Cookman and those areas. So we felt that it was important to bring natural light for our tenant, um, and that's what they requested. So that's the big driver into implementing glass. And then from, um, a design perspective, and I think some others agree, that when you're implementing new elements into a, um, an historic type building, uh, you know, it, it's felt that trying to, you know, provide contrast instead of mimicking is a, is a better option. You don't, you never try to, you know, repeat is, is kind of what, you know, not just my philosophy, but many. I think that's the, the correct approach.
I see. Um, now you're, you're aware that this is a designated historic district, correct?
Historic district is correct.
Sorry, I didn't hear that answer.
It's a historic district, not historic structure.
Yes, that's what I said. You're, you're aware that this is a historic district.
He said yes.
Yes, yes.
And, and you're also aware that the downtown redevelopment plan has historic architectural guidelines built into it?
Yes, they're built into it.
Okay. And you're, you're saying that it's your opinion that it's preferable to diverge from those standards?
They're taking the position that it's not, that it's since it's a, uh, the structure itself is not on the hit state, the state or national historic register. So it's not a historic structure, although it's within the historic district. The UEZ guidelines apply, but not as a historic structure.
Okay. So would you agree that the fact that it's in the downtown redevelopment zone that the design guidelines do in fact apply by that fact alone?
The design guidelines apply.
And those design guidelines are based on historic preservation, are they not?
That's incorrect. Part three of the design guideline will make reference to historic preservation, but not the other sections.
Oh, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, have you, have you looked at the cover sheet of those design guidelines?
Read all the design guidelines, all the way.
Okay. Um, would you say that the author of those guidelines would be a better opinion of to the intent than,
Inappropriate question. That, that question is irrelevant.
It's irrelevant who the author of the guidelines was.
Yeah, it does. Werner, if I may, I understand what you're saying. However, they're asking for exceptions to some of the guidelines, which the board is empowered to grant.
I get it.
So they, I mean, I, you know, they, they, it isn't a matter of, okay, they, these are cast in stone and we have to follow them. We, the board has the power to grant those exceptions.
Absolutely. I'm just trying,
Whether or not the applicant has satisfied the board, that they should grant those exceptions.
I'm, I'm in the, in my line of questioning, I'm also trying to establish professional credibility as to what my opinions may be later.
Well, let's get to the point then. And then we'll get to, your, your opinions are valuable and we certainly want to hear them, but let's get to the point.
All right. So as I've heard the testimony, you have no problem with creating the divided fan lights at the top of the, uh, arch windows, correct?
Can you get my charger by the lamp?
Dan?
Excuse me? Sorry. I had someone to get a battery charger for me.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was, I was just saying, ba- based on, uh, what I've heard for the testimony, um, you have no problem with creating divided lights in the fan pattern at the tops of those, uh, windows, correct?
Not creating, just not true divided lights.
True, yeah. Okay. And you also have no problem with creating, uh, more of a mass as a divider between the top and the bottom sections by way of either dentals and, uh, protruding molding, or perhaps ediments to replicate, uh, the other side of the building. That's not a problem either.
No.
Okay. Um, now, my question is, what's at the top, the very top in the existing pediment above the columns there? What is, what is that element in the middle there?
It's some, I mean, it's better to just pull up a picture of it for real than it is for me to try to explain exactly what's there. I mean, it's just a ornate, um, decorative piece in the center.
Okay. So, so you're, you're intending to keep the original one that's there, correct?
Yeah, yes. We didn't model perfectly the top of the building.
Yeah, it's quite, it's quite ornate and detailed. And, uh, I guess my question is, is this just a visual placeholder? Or are you intending to rip out the original and replace it with this?
It's a visual placeholder. We're not intending to touch anything up top.
Great. Thank, thank you very much. Um, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I have to just get a charger for my, I'll be back in two seconds.
I don't show any other hands raised at, at the moment.
Close the public. Yeah, madam chairwoman.
Okay. Do we have, um, do we have any, any other testimony, Mr. Karas?
That's all the testimony I have.
Okay. Do we have any other, uh, statements that anyone would like to make before we, uh, proceed with a vote?
Public comment.
Yes, I'm just looking for if we have any professionals.
Oh, okay. No, I'm sorry. Werner was just cross examining. He still hasn't made to make a comment.
Correct.
I, uh, I got something quick I could just add. Um, so, uh, I've worked with the, the applicant's engineer. Uh, we've had a few discussions about drainage and all of our concerns have been addressed. Um, you know, initially we discussed buying into existing stormwater, uh, infrastructure within the street, but no such infrastructure exists anywhere nearby. And, um, you know, our main concern was that we didn't want any downspouts discharging over the sidewalk. Um, and they've represented to us that that is not the case and that, um, there is existing drainage which, uh, connects internal inside the building and ultimately discharges, uh, in a couple of spots through the face of the curb. So the sidewalk will be protected and, uh, we take no issue with, uh, the reuse of those drainage facilities.
You, you know, this is Bond Street and I, you know, I live on Bond Street. So, you, you know, the replacing, is the sewer replacement going all the way? I, I think, I mean, I'm at Asbury and Bond and, you know, just today they replaced, they did three blocks replacing the sewers. Bond Street's being, you know, reconstructed from Fifth Avenue. I don't know if it goes all the way to Cookman.
It goes to Summerfield Avenue.
I'm sorry, James?
It goes to Summerfield Avenue.
Oh, it stops. Okay.
Okay. So nobody has any other, uh, you're okay, Doug and, uh, Michael?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have no other comments. Um, it's really up to the board now.
Okay. All right. Any planning board members have any comments?
Well, you know, I, I hear what John said and, you know, the best of the worlds would be if the windows were recessed. I don't know what the temperature is on the rest of the board. If we're, excuse me, matter of, of, of order, I think we should hear the public comments and then have any further discussion about what Dan was just talking about amongst the board members.
Okay.
Yeah, rather than you have your discussion, then ask for public comments and then based on public comments, you may have further discussion. So makes sense to hear the public comments, close that portion of the meeting and then the board have their discussion and vote.
All right, let's, uh, open up, uh, can I get a motion to open up public comment?
So moved.
Good. All right, Irina.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And all right, I only see one hand raised. Um, Mr. City Historian, please state your name, your address, and then Jack will swear you in and then we'll start the clock.
Werner, are you there?
Thank you, Irina. Yes, Jack.
Okay. I trust you to tell me the truth. Is your right hand raised or will it be raised?
Affirmative.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. We will recognize you as the city historian. And please spell your name for the record and give us your address and go right ahead with your comments.
Uh, W E R N E R Baumgartner, B A U M G A R T N E R, Fifth Avenue, Iver Park.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay. Um, this is a rather unique situation, uh, to any that I've seen before in that, uh, reconstruction and demolition was started before, um, an application was heard. So I'm a bit concerned by how this is progressing. Um, just to let everybody know, if you don't, I authored the design standards for the downtown that are being used as part of the, uh, urban enterprise zone facade program. And I can tell you that the intent of those standards are to encourage historic preservation and historic, uh, interpretation of traditional downtown buildings. Um, this particular building is in fact on a historic register, um, not legally binding to anything, but certainly recognized. And it's the Monmouth County Inventory of Historic Sites, um, that gave this building some, uh, additional credibility for being a site of preservation. Um, whether it's on the national register or not is truly irrelevant since no public funding, to my knowledge, is being used on this project. Uh, national register standards would only apply if legally adopted as part of a plan or if public funding is used. Now, as far as the presentation, um, I think you're all on the right track with trying to replicate to the visual look and feel of the existing historic windows that still exist on Bond Street. The building is a homogenous piece of architecture. To divide it up into two separate looking sides i- is absolutely not inconsistent, not consistent with the, uh, design standards or the intent of the downtown plan. Uh, recessing those frames into the masonry, adding the divided lights, adding a mass of dividing, uh, material between the top and bottom would go a long way to making this, uh, fit in better and, and be consistent with the desired look and feel. Um, what no one has considered is also the top of the building. I've seen no discussion about the top. Those windows up there are completely horrendous. They have no connection to the building. They may be in similar locations, but their massing and shape and size are, are a complete distraction from the rest of the building. And, uh, that should be addressed also. They should be longer vertically and there's way too many of them. They should match only the major windows down at the bottom, not the minor windows in order to look like they fit in. Um, you know, it, this could be a lot better, but I think if you, uh, adopt those kinds of, uh, design, um, criteria to make it look more homogeneous, you will end up with a much better project overall. Also, from the interior, think of how different blazing systems would appear from the interior. That would look really disjointed and, uh, and very unattractive also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. All right.
All right, let's, let's open it up for, uh, for discussion.
If I may just, if I may just briefly speak before the board goes into discussion.
Okay, just a second. Irina wanted to say something.
No, no, I just want to clarify, there are no other hands raised.
Okay.
Can we get a motion to close public comment?
Yes, motion to close public comment.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Public comment closed. Thank you.
If I may, just a few minor comments. Um, number one, the national register is not irrelevant. In fact, on page thirteen of your design guidelines in the CBD redevelopment plan, it specifically states structures on the, structures on the national and or state registers of historic places shall be subject to the Department of Interior standards for rehabilitation. So by no means is it irrelevant, um, the national historic register. Number two, when you do look at your design guidelines, they are guidelines. There's a lot of subjectivity within those guidelines and that's, there's a reason for that. To give the board discretion to be able to come up with different views and different designs. Because when you're creating buildings or adding structures on top of an existing building, you need that discretion, um, and, and you need options in order to come up with what the board determines is the appropriate design for what is going in. There is no one size fits all. One thing I do want to make mention of with regard to the storefront, the design guidelines, the UEZ guidelines specifically seen in there, to use transparent glass for the ground floor storefronts with large paint display windows that comprise between seventy and seventy-five percent the total ground level facade. So your ground floor where you have storefronts, it's contemplated that it's going to be mostly glass. And that is consistent with what you see within the downtown to welcome business in the downtown and provide for vibrant business district. With that being said, uh, the applicant, I think, has gone very far in trying to accommodate the board. Not going to go into the past history as to what transpired. Um, certainly though, the applicant did everything legal in proceeding with this application, having had, and having performed the work that already was performed on the building. They're here, they're willing to work with the board, they have worked with the board, they've come up with numerous options, some very good options for the board to consider. With that, I would submit, uh, to the board. Thank you.
Good. Do we have any, uh, anyone would like to make any comments, um, from the board while we're,
Yeah, sure. So, I mean,
amongst ourselves?
So, I mean, you know, you, I guess I'm looking back at the design guidelines and what you're looking for, uh, and, and, you know, it says right here, I guess it's page ten, windows, replacement,
Replacement window should match the original windows in size and style. Select glazing bar systems that are similar to the original window profiles, you know. Windows subdivided into lights by mutton shall have lights of square or vertical proportions. Muttons on windows at ground level should be true divided lights. It goes on and on and on. So I mean, yeah, I guess, you know, you hear a number of us, you know, whether you got a building permit or not, don't like, you know, what happened with those windows, you know. And we sort of liked that if it would have matched better the original, including that they were set back into the facade.
Well, well, Daniel, I think that that's something that we should also discuss is the, is one of the parts of the request to have recessed them. Because from what I understand that when Daniel was asked if that was possible, it was mentioned that it was. Is that right, Daniel? Mr. Conde Tor?
Yes, I mean, it'll take, you know, significant amount of work, but you know, it's unfortunate that the, I know Killer Pies has finished their interior renovation and they're scheduled to open that will definitely impact their operation and the work that they completed on the inside, but it is possible.
And you mentioned that the windows are recessed to a certain degree now, am I correct?
Yes, yes, not the level that was previous.
Yeah, they, they look pretty flush, but does anybody feel that, that, does anybody want to have a more discussion about requesting that their windows be recessed? Or not?
Including the door.
Does anyone feel strongly about that?
Yeah, Barbara, I do. I think, I think Dan makes a very good point about the recess. Werner made a good point and there's certainly enough comment concerning the flat appearance of the storefront windows as being not desirable. I think the board has kind of indicated that they want those windows recessed. To what extent? I guess that's a, an issue that can be discussed by the applicant's architect as to whether, how, how, how deep a recess it could be.
Anyone else have anything else about the recessed windows and door? Because it sounded as though that was something that Jim, Dan and Eric were, felt pretty strongly about. Okay.
Yeah, sorry, Barbara, it's Jen Sauter again. I just wanted to say a couple of things. One that I, I will get to that particular one, that I appreciate all the work that the applicant's been doing to work with the board and certainly if the windows had, if, to me, I always wanted to try to make an effort to follow those guidelines in the sense that preserve the character of the downtown in those buildings that we have left that still have the original elements. So I know that that ship has sailed. But if it had come to us at a different time, in a different situation, I would be having a lot different conversation. I think we all probably, it would be different conversation today. So we have what we have. I think that we should, we should talk more about the possibility of recessing further to see, you know, the way the benefit and the benefit and the, to look at that, would it really make the difference? Would it really give the shadow and the depth? Because it might make a big difference in that facade to have it recessed a couple more inches. And what I'm just trying to say is that in the, and this is not to the applicant, this is generally as a process and you know, not to go back and reopen all those other past discussions, but that, you know, generally to have the opportunity to not lose original elements from the building would allow us to have, oh, sorry, I think Warner's unmuted.
Irina, can you do something about that? Thank you.
Sorry, I was just saying that the, if the, some of the original elements had, were still retained on that front facade, it would make such, we wouldn't be having this discussion. So the idea that these few buildings that have those original elements in the future, to be able to preserve them would, would really change this discussion. So I, I wanted to hear if any of the board members feel strongly also about moving that back a few inches. And I also wanted to just say thank you to Warner, although he's, I don't know if he's muted still, but for making those comments because having an understanding of what that character could be downtown and making sure we try to retain as much as possible before it's gone, I think it's really important thing to consider as a board. And it seems like everybody feels pretty strongly about that and that this is a unique situation that the windows have already been, the facade's already been changed.
Anyone, anyone feel that the, that the recess should not, that they're fine with, without recessing windows? Because I also feel that the, that having the windows recessed a bit would be, would give the, the building a bit more character than like it used to have. And yes, everything was done in our minds prematurely, but I do understand that the applicant did everything legally. I get that. But I think that it would really preserve some more of the character if we did do that. Is that something that we, anybody want to have a discussion about how, how much it should be done? How deep? What are the possibilities, Mr. Conde Tor?
I mean, like I said, the only, the true issue, I think the thickness of the existing wall is there. It's just, we have to demo work that was just recently completed on the inside. Unfortunately. I mean, they, they had to finish work. I know they put some, some brick veneer within the interior as a part of their tenant fit out. And that, that brick returns to the backside of the window, so that'll have to be taken out. And I, I would have to, I couldn't say off the back of the top of my head what's actually behind there in that specific area, but I mean, there is depth, it's just, it's the amount of, you know, what has to be done for it.
All right, so it sounds as though we have to come up with some sort of a, some sort of a vote that can encompass everything that we really want to accomplish here.
If I may?
Sure.
Okay. There are a number of other items that we would, I'd like to see if we could get it, get, we absolutely want to give the applicant some direction, correct? As to which way the board would like to go.
Yes.
The decision of how, how deep and if how, what's the maximum, what's the minimum and all that, I think should really come, be driven by the applicant. They're the ones that know the building and know what they can do. I don't know that any of us can say two more inches, three more inches is going to do it or not. I would think that Mr. Conde Tor would be the one to do that. He went to school for architecture. So insofar as if you are going to ask the applicant to go back to the drawing board, so to speak, on that one element, I'd like to make sure that we're firm on the other elements. I wouldn't want to ask an applicant to go back and do, make changes and then come back and say, oh, by the way, you know, if, if we're fine with these other conditions or elements of the case, then let them know that so that they can go back, address that one issue and come back and let you know what they can do. Or are willing to do, and then you give them a vote.
So then we should specify whether we are in agreement as a board of the, what the structure of, what the door should look like, what the band should look like and what, and whether it's mullions or no mullions. So that, that would be one vote.
Yeah, yeah, that would, I mean, get a consensus from the board so we can give an applicant direction so that we don't send them off on an expensive wild goose chase only to come back and then say, no, by the way, I don't like these other things, you know.
So, so if we could have a vote on that first, just to see what, just to get a temperature of what the planning board feels. If I could put it out there to say if we have the design being with the mullions, the thick band ornate but no dental work and a thin door.
Yeah.
Can I get a, can we, can we do a vote?
I could characterize a lot of conditions that I think the board may want to consider.
Well, should we, I was just thinking of doing this one first.
Oh, sure, okay.
Get a consensus and then we could do all the others that would have to come in, if that's okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
I hope we could do. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I apologize for interrupting you. Okay, it's more I, I, I agree that the windows and the doors should be more recessed, but I think one thing that we've missed tonight, I don't know, maybe I missed something. If we're talking about an entire project, nobody's talked about the third floor addition whatsoever. So I mean, are we just going to talk about recess? Like Jack said, we don't want them to come back with a, a great plan to address questions A and B, but we never talked about question C as far as the third floor addition. I, I don't want to do the applicant any disharm. So I mean, I, I think I have some problems with the third floor addition. I don't know if anybody else does, but and I don't know what the DRC or DCR talked about the third floor addition, but I agree with Jack, we shouldn't just like tell them, okay, come back with something, then we send them back again. So again, I'm in the quandary.
All right, I'm sorry that, that we didn't, if you feel that we didn't go through that, if there's, why don't we, can we go through these, just to get the vote on this? First, on the windows, just to get an agreement or not agreement on the win, on the windows and the doors, and then we can go back further, John, on your concerns on the third floor. Because obviously we need to continue on and make sure that everything is answered.
No problem, no problem whatsoever on my part.
Okay, so Irina, can we get a, can we get a vote?
Just to clarify, is this a, is this a on the record vote?
My motion and second. We're just trying to get a poll of the members to see if they're in agreement with these three elements.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'm just gonna go down the list and call everyone's name and then Barbara, do you want everyone to just state what their preferences are?
No, I'd like to find out if they are, if they agree with the mullions, the thicker band, that's a little bit more ornate, but no dental work and a thin door. If they are, they say yes, fine. If they say no, what the concern is.
Barbara, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Could you split these things up as you you address the recessing of the windows?
Yes, I split it up.
Okay.
Split that up.
And, and same way with everything else. Fine, thank you. I appreciate that.
No problem. So if we could just go through that, Irina?
What are we voting on?
The minions?
Okay, that's the first.
And a thin door.
No, I think Jim is asking you to separate them.
Yes, to separate whether it's recessed or not.
No, separate each of those elements. He wants you to take a straw vote on all three items.
Oh.
Each element. Well, that's a discussion you have to have. If you don't want to do it, if the board is, no, if the board is happy with the three, put it out with the three and see where it goes.
Well, that's what I was thinking of going out with the three.
Okay, then let's see where it goes.
And if it doesn't go, then we'll split them out.
Then we go back, oh, we start over here.
That's fine. All right, Irina, we're gonna go with the mullions, the thick band, that's a bit more ornate, but no dental work and a thin door. That is the initial vote.
Okay, let's hear it.
Okay, Mayor John Moore?
I'm gonna say as the project is proposed, I'm a no.
Okay. Councilwoman Iman Clayton?
For those three elements, yes.
Okay.
Jim Henry?
No.
I'm sorry, should I also include the members that are not voting on the application?
No, because they're not gonna vote on it.
No, there's only one person not voting, I believe.
Yeah, whoever, whoever's ineligible, you wouldn't ask to vote on this.
All right, that would be, at this point, I believe that that would be Juanita as alternate too.
And also
And James.
James.
Yes. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Henry, Mr. Henry's vote was a no, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Jennifer Sauter.
On those three, yes.
Eric Galco?
Yes.
Daniel Scannamayo?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krzak?
Yes.
Okay, so we have the two no's and six yeses.
Okay.
On that item, on those three options, sorry.
Okay, so that was on the three options.
And not that it would make a, not that it would make a difference, but you could go to Juanita because it's six two, you got nine votes.
Yeah, who, who, we have, how many eligible members?
I thought we had nine. I thought, I thought.
We had nine.
Doesn't James?
Eligible member would be James.
But why would James be ineligible?
He didn't hear the first hearing.
Yeah, James is not voting. He's not.
Participate in a discussion, but he can't, he can't vote on the matter this evening.
So then Juanita is in.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. I thought you had said not Juanita.
No, she's in.
I thought so. I'm so sorry, Juanita.
Okay.
Please let us know what you vote.
My vote is yes, but I, the very first option, was that the fanning effect in the windows?
Yes.
Yeah, I voted yes.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so that's seven, seven yes and two no.
Okay.
All right, so next, then the next option is that having the discussion about the recessing of the windows, if we feel that that's something that that would make a significant difference in the application versus not. Does that sound, sound appropriate, John?
Yeah.
But is that, is that contingent upon the other three items though?
Well, the other three items are given, we're given, we've already given,
We've already.
Voiced our opinion. You've voiced your opinion on those. Now you want to talk about this third issue so that if we send the applicant back, the applicant knows the other three issues are put to bed and that they just have to address the recess.
The rest recessing.
Thank you, recessing of the windows.
All right, are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, Mayor John Moore?
So this vote is to recess the windows.
Correct. And door.
And door, thank you, yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Iman Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Eric Galco?
No.
Daniel Scannamayo?
Yes.
Juanita Barnes?
You're muted, Juanita.
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krzak?
I'm a yes on that as well.
All right, we have eight yeses.
Okay, so now, now does anyone have any other concerns or questions? Like John had mentioned something about the, the third floor. Does anyone have any concerns about that?
Barbara?
Yeah.
Before, before we go to the third floor, just one question. Juanita had suggested that the brickwork be extended out to the east side of the building. Are we gonna address that at all?
Um.
No.
I think that there was a, there was a concern about being able to match the brick for it to go across.
I gotta, I, I, let me interject. We're, we've never done this. We're, it's one thing to ask an applicant to consider certain things, to give him some assurances on some things, but we've never broken down an application like this, in this way, where we've gone little, one issue at a time in terms of distinct votes for distinct issues. I mean, if the applicant has concluded their case and they're done, and they've already presented what they feel is adequate for their needs for the, for the third floor, why are we asking them to readdress it? I don't, I don't get the way we're, we're approaching this and it seems
I thought we'd already, I thought we'd already discussed the third floor.
Yeah, and I, we're, we're kind of headed down a path where, where we're just
revisiting all the things.
We're voting on the whole rope, not on the individual fibers.
And I was satisfied that, that we had, that we had addressed why they couldn't do the break. So I'm good with that.
Yeah, and I only asked Yeah, and I only asked to take a vote on those three items just to, so that we didn't send the applicant off on a wild goose chase.
Because I thought the issue with them going to DRC was unrelated to the front facade. There was like we had, I thought we had concluded about the third floor for the most part.
No, I remember something about the windows.
I thought it was like the penetration, just the rhythm of the windows on the third floor, but nothing more about the design of it. I don't know that we'd ever really.
Yeah, but we didn't really, I mean, it just flashed up on the screen. We didn't really see it, you know. If the applicant is satisfied that that's what they're presenting, then you have to decide based on what they presented. Well, can we see it? I mean, it was already been done. They brought it back tonight. They brought it back tonight with modifications.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, so and they addressed it. Let's see it. We didn't really, okay.
Correct, correct, modifications with no input by the applicant, either by the board, either by the public, either by anybody. So I mean, so the third floor tonight and not the applicant's fault whatsoever, because we were discussing A and B before we got to C, the third floor was not discussed one second tonight. You're right, John, I take back my comments.
There was, there was a presentation by Mr. Candidor about the third floor, when he was reviewing.
And no one asked many questions.
Right, and there was no, right, we went, we went through it. Granted, it was quickly. Is there, John, I mean, and Jack, this is a very different type of application where we feel that things have been done out of order. So I have to request that we, there was justification for us to go the round that we're going. I get, I get the fact that I do feel that the mayor does also get a chance to state any concerns he has about the third floor. If we have missed it, you know, if, you know, if that train, if that train already went, you know, I still think we can go back for the mayor to have to have voices concerned. That's my feeling. I don't know if that's, you know.
Okay, but I don't.
Cutting that down is.
I do not, I do not recommend that the board go and split this thing up into multiple issues and that we consider them on an individual basis. You've got to consider the totality of the application. Don't, I, I, I'm, you're going to lose sight of the forest through the trees. It just seems to me to be get very fractionated here and we're revisiting what's already been presented. And that's the way I feel. I mean, that's what's being done. If the, if there's a question that was missed, okay, we got to recall the witness, we got to start all over again with them, then fine, you want to ask some more questions about it, go right ahead. But he testified what he testified to. Everybody had an opportunity to ask questions. If they didn't, they didn't, and if they did, they did. I'm just suggesting that do not break this down into individual component parts and start all over again. But in all due respect, Jack, I mean, we didn't ask the questions because I thought, and then, then he got excused. You know, we got all caught up in the, in the ground floor and I was waiting for the third floor for there to be a discussion. And it just went by the wayside.
I'm, it sounds, it sounds as though the mayor and, and Daniel have some concerns about the third floor. I know that we had the discussion about the windows. We did request in our last meeting that the windows, the rhythm of the windows changed. Those were changed. And though I respect you, Jack, as to what your concern is, I feel that we have to open up that discussion.
I give you my opinions. You do what you want to do. It's fine.
Okay, does, does anyone at the board, on the board level have any questions that they would like or concerns that they would like to bring up, having to do with this application, whether it's the third floor, whether it's the first floor, whether it's anything, so that we can close this up? But I know that people have some concerns. So please, Daniel, the mayor, please bring forward your thoughts or questions.
Well, we're gonna have to recall a witness. I'd like to see it. That's.
But, okay, that presentation already happened.
All right, let's ask Mr. Karas. Are you willing to recall your witness and allow him to testify?
We've testified at, I think, three hearings already as far as the design of the third floor. I don't know what more we can testify to. The last thing was the revisions of the windows to make them in alignment more with the bottom windows, which we did. We went through that. I don't know what more there can be. We had moved back the front part of the, the third floor in accordance with the recommendation of the board. We changed the windows. There's nothing more to present.
John, did you have something you wanted to say? Is there, is there a possibility that whatever might, the questions that might be brought up by either Daniel or anyone else from the board or the mayor, that you would be able to answer those questions, Mr. Karas?
I don't know what the questions are.
I understand. I'm just asking if that would be a way that we could go without having to reintroduce Mr. Karas.
If I know what the questions are, then I can certainly then consider whether or not I can do. And I'd also then be in a better position, be able to determine whether or not I want to call back my architect.
Okay. John, you had some concerns about the third floor or whatever you have concerns about? Or Daniel, if you wanted to go?
Well, I just remember from the last time, there were questions about the third floor and about the windows and about not fitting in with the rest of the building. And I guess, I guess I just missed it, that it went by so fast. We were talking about the ground floor that, and nobody else said anything. So, you know, I guess the rest of the board is satisfied with it, but, you know, I, I didn't think tonight we got a good look at it.
And I'm sorry, the phone was ringing and I had to pick it up. It's Family Matters. I, I missed it too, and I apologize for that. My, my comment would be like, it's just like, it's too square, there's too many windows, and it just looks like a shoebox on top of a building. And I apologize to the architect because I know you went to school and you're much smarter than me. That's just my personal opinion. So, thank you.
I'd like to make, also, also like to make a comment concerning the third floor. Like Dan, I thought you were coming back to this to discuss it, but to be that as it may, I think John's comment concerning the shoebox is quite appropriate. The guidelines tell us that we are supposed to try to not mimic, but make it compatible with the building that it's being constructed on. And this, in my opinion, as, it needs to be dressed up a bit. There's, there's nothing attractive at all about this particular addition. The color is different, and, okay, I can understand where you want to make that contrast, but there are, there are no no decorative elements that are incorporated in this building. And as far as the windows go, the guidelines indicate that the windows on the upper floors are supposed to be in alignment with the major windows on the lower floors. And you've got two additional windows, and they are a totally different style. I think those things have to, or should be addressed in the particular addition that is being contemplated here.
Now, not for nothing, we're at the third hearing at this point. I wish these concerns would have been brought up when we presented the application over the course of the first two hearings before we got to tonight. We went through the DRC with this.
But hang on, the DRC, we were only looking at the facade. We were not looking on the third floor.
No, granted. I understand that.
And we're not on the DRC?
But we've had two hearings before this tonight.
But we never discussed this in any detail.
We did. That is not true. We went, we presented our architect and our engineer that went into great detail at the prior hearings with regard to the design of the third floor.
Yeah, and basically, people said, you know, they didn't like it and that, you know, could you make it disappear more?
That, that was not the comments that we received.
But I believe that the, the color had been requested to be changed, and I believe that that did happen, and the windows did, were modified from the exterior. And I believe that you also set back the front a bit.
That is correct. All the recommendations that had been requested were made. I mean, it gets to be a very long and expensive process.
Now, the question's going to be, is that, do we want to consider calling back Mr. Candidor, or do we go for a vote and if people still have concerns?
I have a comment.
Okay.
You know, in looking at the, you know, package that we got, then what I think is a good thing about that third floor is that because it is, you know, different and it's a different color, it really sets off the architecture of the first two floors. Like you can really see the building clearly. And I feel like if they tried to make it more decorative, make it the same color, I don't know what people have in mind. I think it would take away from the architecture of the first two floors. So.
I agree.
And also, people are going to have offices up there and taking away windows to, you know, for the smaller ones, would end up making those offices, you know, much darker and much less attractive and possibly, you know, less rentable. So, you know, to me, I think it sets it off and makes it look, you know, the building's architecture look much clearer than if it was, if you tried to blend that third floor in with the first two.
I have, I have to say that, Juanita, I'm glad that you mentioned that, because when I saw that the new color that was suggested, that I felt the same way, that it did accentuate what the current first two floors look like and in a positive way. And also with the additional, with the windows, with the better rhythm, that enhanced the building, in my opinion. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything?
I think Yvonne Sauter, do you have your hand up, Yvonne?
Yeah, I did. All I was going to say is, I knew we had a discussion, that we had the presentation. I just did not remember that we had a full discussion on the third floor. And in, in my mind, I was not happy with the entire third floor. And I was looking to, and I thought we were going to have a further discussion and make some other suggestions. But if, if I'm out of order and the discussions were had and I missed it, I don't know, maybe I was dosing.
Well, I'm actually looking at the prior, the prior design. So the color is better, the windows are better. In fact, but if you look, it's so funny, going back to the windows, the ground floor windows, in that, in that design, they have, they have the black windows, but they're recessed in. But it does look better in this, this new one. I guess we just didn't go over it. We just missed it tonight.
So, Mr. Karas, are you open to bringing in Mr. Candidor again, as some members of the board have requested? Or are you willing for us to take a vote and have the chips fall where they may?
Are you talking about the recess aspects? Because that we heard.
No, they were talking, that the members of the board were talking about the third floor.
I know, but if the board is inclined or looking to recess that front facade, we would have to come back. Number one, we'd have to determine whether or not it's possible and then look to see how much, if it is, we can go back. So we would have to come back for that.
I don't think that anybody was looking, looking for that. I thought that it had already been recessed.
I'm sorry?
I thought it had already been recessed, when one of the first requests came out. First time we met, I think it was. If I'm wrong, then that's fine.
You, we're talking about the recess of that front facade. It's about one to two inches, but my understanding is.
What am I? No, go ahead.
No, my understanding is the board is looking to have additional recessing of those doors and windows.
Correct.
Right, so we would have to come back for that. Because we have to, number one, determine whether or not it's possible to do it where the doors and windows are placed. And number two, see how much we can go back if it is possible. So my understanding is that that's the one thing that the board would like us to revisit.
That, that for sure, but we still need to see, there are some members of the board that are interested in talking about the third floor.
Well, right now, as I see, I thought the third floor was done. The board already had made comments with regard to that previously, and we made revisions to the plans to accommodate those requests. You know, as I indicated, you know, every time we go to a meeting to all of a sudden have new recommendations, gets extremely expensive to constantly change plans after you thought you had the revisions done. You know, there needs to be a discussion, request, you know, in terms of revisions, and then we, you know, we do what we can in terms of accommodating those requests, which I thought we had done with regard to the third floor. We had a full conversation, in a full presentation on that third floor already.
Okay, I'm asking one more time. Would you like to have Mr. Candidor present again the third floor, or would you like to take your chances?
You talk, tonight, you want more testimony on that?
That's, that's what our, our members are asking for.
Allow him to testify as to what the plans are that we presented. That's fine.
Is that what?
Barbara, I'm sorry, it's John Moore. And I'm sorry I put you in this predicament. If myself and Dan and Jim missed part of the presentation on the third floor, I apologize. I think the votes are there, probably to pass the third floor. So I don't want to put, again, I guess you're going to have to call for a vote. I wouldn't want to put Mr. Karas and his witness through another hour and then it's going to be another meeting. So if the votes are there for the third floor, and even if I vote no, I accept the majority and if I missed it, I apologize.
Let's do this. I'll have Mr. Candidor testify, and if it's some minor tweaks or something that we can do, maybe we can accommodate that. So why don't we open it up for Mr. Candidor?
Okay, Mr. Candidor, could you just go run through the third floor one more time, please?
Sure. Do you want to see renderings or do we do it with the plans? I think we could probably.
Yeah, with the plans that you have. That, that you showed this today.
Sure.
For, for the revised plans.
Right, the revised plans that you were shown today.
This is the rendering. Very good.
There you go.
So, we're at the third floor. So from the original, from the first, this is from the comments on the first night, the original night, we made a few revisions to the third floor plan. One is we pushed back the front wall. The, the original plan had the front wall closer to the parapet, and it felt, you know, that some members felt that it was, it was too tight there and it was kind of competing too much with the, the pentament and the architecture in the front, so we slid that back. Also, we clarified that the new wall of the third floor, the face of that new wall, is set behind the coping and the parapet. It's a very low parapet, it's only a few, few inches, behind the parapet of the, the original building below. So therefore, we're not stacking on top of it, recreating that relief so that, that existing, existing architecture work, you know, stands out. So you can see the separation of what was old and what is new. Thirdly, we replaced the windows along both sides to create more uniformity. I believe, we originally had like double hung windows on the Bond Street side, and we had, there were some casemats on the east side. the east side. So we, we, we cleaned that up and created a more uniformed, um, architecture with the windows. Um, for, those are the real major changes that we performed on the third floor. Okay? Uh, I think at this point, it'd be best to kind of go back to the architecture and I'll just, I'm picking no particular uh, option, right? Because the third floor option is consistent throughout. So just bear that in mind.
Can I ask a question? How are the offices, what, what's the HVAC for the offices? Which, there's no, going to be no window units, right? How, how are they cooled?
There's no window units. Now, we'll have a split, uh, system. So we'll have an, uh, we'll have a, um, uh, centralized, you know, furnace within the building, uh, pull in fresh air through, through the roof. And we have condensing units on the roof. So small package unit. Uh, there'll be no uh, ventilation, um, through louvers on the facade.
Could, could you just go back to the floor plan, the interior floor plan of the, uh?
Sure.
So basically, so the Bond Street side, the, the wall, you said it's just a, it's just set back a little bit on the parapet, right?
It's set behind the parapet.
It's set behind the parapet. Like, what is that?
Uh, it's like eight to, eight to 12 inches. It varies.
So what's the, what's the sort of dimensions of these offices like?
Uh, they're roughly about 10 by 12 in that regard, about 120 square foot each approximately.
So you, you're like sort of confined, like it, it's, it's difficult for you to set back more on the Bond Street side?
Yeah. And then remember also too, um, we want to bring lighting on the east side. And since we're on a, we're on a zero lot line building, in order to create openings, we have to be a certain distance off of that property line. So on the, um, on the east side, we're actually setting it back three feet off the property line in order to be able to introduce glazing in there. So we're all, we also have that, that constraint as well. If we do do the same on both sides, then we wouldn't be able to put windows on the east side.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think what, you know, um, and what Juanita had spoken to earlier kind of really summarized our design intent, I think, pretty well. I, I, I mean, we feel that, uh, minimizing the architecture here and not adding the ornateness and, and crowns and, and things like that at the top and cornices and that's, those types of details is, is done purposely um, in order to frame what we consider the, the existing building. And I think, but when you look at this perspective, I think that's, that's quite clear. So um, having this, even the stair tower in the back, you can see how we're, we're stepping back that shaft on top of the wall. So this remains, this existing element in the back left on Bond Street remains and this elevator, you know, shaft comes up and it's very clean and minimalistic. And I think, I think, you know, we were asked that we had a darker tone originally. And, you know, I, we felt that that dark was kind of like popping out, right? It was, it was, it was too bold. And we felt like this lighter shade of, of brick, um, really kind of sets itself into the sky or the background more, right? We don't want to make it blue. I don't think blue is the color that matches the sky, but we want to kind of go in that family of tones, um, to help, you know, minimize, uh, the impact of that building. I mean, the idea is not to make the top of the building a showcase, right? That's, that's what we don't want to do. We want people to focus on the two stories below. So I mean, in that regard, this, this clean type of, um, contemporary addition is, is the main purpose of what we're doing. And there are like, there's, there are elements that are, are brought, like we, instead of making an ephesus box on top, right? We, we wanted to make, use a, a, a brick material because, you know, we're, we're consistent with the, the original building being brick. So we're not using the same color brick. We're not using the same type of brick, but we're using the same textures and the same materials instead of, you know, doing hardy panel or, or, you know, an ephesus or a stucco finish, which was is not anywhere really on this building at all. So between that and then the rhythm of what we created and the bringing the natural light into those offices, uh, we felt that, um, you know, we put together, uh, uh, of an addition that kind of frames the, the, the building below. And I mean, that's the gist of, you know, what, what we designed.
And is that in accordance with architectural standards where when you have a building, that's an older building with certain ornate elements to it, you don't want to overpower it with an addition up top?
Correct. That is correct. And we, you know, I've worked on, so just in my professional, um, I've done several projects at, at Fort Monmouth, um, on the Oceanport side. Um, we actually completed a, a project, uh, uh, Barker Circle, which we recently received approvals. And that those buildings are actually on the national register individually as buildings. So we did have to go through the state of New Jersey for approvals. And we added dormers to the tops of these buildings to gain space up there. And working with the state, you know, it was very clear that, uh, creating something that um, doesn't mimic or stand, contrast itself from the existing historic building is, is the preferred direction. Even when we've added elevators, we added a few elevators on the buildings. And in that case, you know, a lot of concrete, a lot of brick. And it was specific that they didn't want us to use those materials. They, they, they wanted to kind of showcase, show, show differently than the original. So I, I've had that experience working with the Historic Trust in New Jersey in the, in the Schipper. And I, I felt that, you know, uh, this is kind of in line with that direction.
Where is the, do you know where does the third story become visible when you're at the street level?
We, oh, like, uh, like
Well, I guess if you're on the sidewalk, I guess if you're at the sidewalk in front of the building, you can't see the third story.
Uh, it would be hard. You have to like, look up pretty, if you're right in front of it, yeah, it'd be difficult.
I mean, I, I assume, of course, Madison
Yes.
becomes visible. I don't know if, of course, Bonda becomes visible.
Yeah, I mean, we, we are, you know, obviously we have a large parking lot to the east of us that we can't do nothing about. So, um, we're, that's, that's the part where we, you know, we talked about putting in a mural and address that the best that we could.
Okay, does the board have any other questions that they would like to present to Mr. Candidor about the third floor or actually about, um, yeah, about his testimony?
Is there any additional architectural elements that the board would like to discuss with regard to that third floor?
You know, but the only thing, and it may be in the rendering, it's, it's the front corners that seem kind of harsh. And I, I don't know what else you could do with them. But maybe they're set back in reality more than they appear in the, in the rendering.
You mean, just this line here?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it might be just the, you know, with the renderings and the lighting, one side is, has obviously more visible light shown on it. And there's a, there's a contrast as it turns the corner, which kind of highlights the edge, you know? Realistically, is that exactly the way it's going to appear? I don't think it'll be such a stark line in reality.
Anyone else have any other questions of Mr. Candidor? From the board or the professionals?
Oh, yeah, hold on. John can't, can't talk to you, so I'm relaying this message.
Okay.
All right. What is it, John? Um, you no, hold on. Okay. Can you hear him?
No, because there's an echo. It's a reverb.
There's gonna be feedback, um, Yvonne. If you, if you tell John to mute his um, computer or phone, whatever he's listening to the meeting on, then there won't be feedback.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, John.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Yvonne. So I, I think this is a different picture than I saw before. I like this design better. And I understand where, uh, Juanita came as far as but I said the two windows at the end were kind of like not in sync. So I understand why now and everything. But just out of curiosity, uh, what type of windows are these going to be? Double, double hung?
These These would be casement windows.
Casement windows?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And again, I apologize for like, I being phone friendly. So thank you.
Any, anybody else have any, uh, questions, uh, from the board, on the board? Okay, let's, um, all right, um, Irene, now we need to open up to the public for any questions about regarding the third floor.
Yeah, it has, the questions have to be limited to the testimony that was given.
Yep.
All right, um, Mr. City Historian has his hand raised. Go ahead, Warner, state your name and ask your question.
Uh, Warner Baumgartner, once again. Um, thank you for, uh, bringing this subject back to the forefront here. Um, i- is there some particular reason why casement windows were chosen over double hung or fixed glass?
Yeah, I mean, I like, I, I think from our overall design standpoint is that we felt that the, um, the casement is a more modern style contemporary windows, which is what the spirit of the addition is, is the contrast. So um, we originally had double hung windows on there and we actually received some comments that, you know, from the board that they didn't like the double hung windows in the original presentation. And, you know, we kind of felt the same. Um, so, yeah, I just don't think putting the double hung, um, benefits of design.
Uh, do you have any concern about weather infiltration, um, when these windows are open? Uh, as you're probably aware, casement windows are notorious for allowing the weather into a building if they're even open widely.
I, I, no, I do not have a concern by that. They're, they're used quite often.
I see. Okay. Um, what's the actual, uh, ratio of, of the openings? I see a, a picture up here, but the perspective may be a little off. Are they square or rectangular in the vertical?
They're rectangular. They're taller than they are wider.
They, okay, that's not completely obvious from, uh, the rendering. Well, here they look square to me.
No, the, the
Testimony is they'll be rectangular.
Yeah.
Well, what's being shown now shows square windows.
The man just testified that he's gonna make them, they're going to be rectangular.
Just might be a function of the graphics of the screen, but they're, they're rectangular.
Taller rather than wider.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Are you referring to the individual units or the entire unit?
The entire unit is taller than it is. I mean, I don't have, I, I don't have an exact number in front of me, but it's a taller than wider unit.
Okay. And you're, you're saying there's two windows per unit, two casements per unit?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, would you be adverse to putting a cornice on this third floor? Uh, typically traditional buildings have a, a cornice to stop the eye.
Testify, you testify. Ask him, ask the question.
Yeah.
Uh, no, I, I would not put a cornice on it. So I think it detracts from the overall architecture. Um, I would like to keep the cornice to work on the existing building only.
How, how large of a cornice is, is on here as, as proposed?
Uh, right now, it's just a, um, the fascia on that is a six inch fascia.
Mm hmm. Okay.
It's just a part of the roof covering and it will, you know, it'll be a cap.
And the, the roof is a flat roof?
Correct.
Did you consider a, a gable roof of any sort?
No, um, I, we didn't feel a gable roof would work. And plus, we also have mechanical equipment that we need to place on the roof. Um, and we would have very limited space. We have no property to put the mechanical on the ground. So a gable roof would be um, something that would be difficult to install with what we need for the systems.
What, what screens the mechanical equipment then?
Um, we are, we did testify in the last hearing that on the east side, uh, we understand there might be some visual concern because we're against the parking lot. So we are providing um, mechanical screening there, uh, to the roof systems. And but, um, from Bond Street, um, you would not be able to see that they're set back far enough where they're not visible from the street.
Uh huh. W- w- wouldn't an actual, uh, gable roof with an attic space lend itself to putting the mechanicals completely out of sight in the attic?
Uh, you, you putting mechanicals in the attic is, is a challenge. You still have to bring in louvers and fresh air and ductwork to, to do that. They, they can't use the attic air to, to circulate. Um, and plus honestly, I mean, just, I, I feel that a, a gable is not fitting of the architecture on the, on the building. So I, I wouldn't propose a gable roof.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. Okay. Um, I see, I see a rendering right here of the front and the west side. Do you have the rear and east side available?
Um, I do not have a rendering of the east side. Uh, the east side is
Were you in, in attendance at the last meeting when those renderings were shown?
I believe they've been all, they've been changed since that time, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a rendering. When, when you say from the rear, like looking south on Bond Street, is that what you're asking?
The rear of the building.
The north side and the east side of the building.
Yeah, on the, on the backs, the rear of the building, we're within five feet of a state building or whatever building is next to us. So there's no real perspective from the rear. So
Well, that's just a, a blank wall essentially.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's whatever the state building. I don't know what it is. It's like part brick, part precast, part what, whatever.
Understood. I was just curious why, uh, only two sides were rendered here. Um, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Warner.
Okay, um, now, do we have any comments that anybody would like, any members of the?
Okay, good. Are we going to allow further comment based on what was just presented?
Well, any, any, I, I believe that we need to allow comment for what was presented um, from the board, if they have any comments having to do with this.
Why don't we hear, why don't we hear from the public first so that the board can take that into consideration? Warner seems to be the only person in attendance. If he just asked questions, if he wants to make a pub, a further comment in addition to what he made earlier, he, he has the right to do that.
All right. Uh, so can I get a motion to open up public comment?
So moved.
All right, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, public comment open. And, uh, again, anyone that would like to comment, please raise your hand. Um, I show one hand raised. Warner, go ahead.
Yeah, Warner.
We're gonna swear you in again.
Yeah.
And start the clock, uh.
Warner, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, you don't have to be re sworn. You were previously were sworn in, so you're still under oath. However, your comments should be limited to the testimony and the new evidence that was presented. You've already presented your, your testimony and yeah, okay. So just limit it to that, please.
Okay, all right. Uh, I, I do have some concerns about the, this addition to the building. You know, there's, there's two design philosophies, uh, one which is being presented. And that is to differentiate an addition to a, uh, architecturally significant building that is completely separate from the existing architecture. Um, that usually leads to a very awkward kind of assembly. The shoebox on the roof kind of description is, uh, apt for this particular presentation. Um, another philosophy is to make an addition blend in with the existing building and look, uh, holistic to some degree. That is, instead of having it back from the parapet walls, have it match the existing building line and go vertically and then create a new cornice at the top to make it appear as though it was a, a logical evolution from the building below it, which is typically what you'd see in, uh, buildings in a downtown and in particular Asbury Park. There are examples of buildings that were expanded vertically and yet they were effectively almost seamless to some degree. Um, in my opinion, as a preservationist and a, and a historian, that is preferable. Preferable kind of an addition is one that is differentiated to some degree, but more seamless and, uh, in, uh, consistency with the existing architecture. So those are my, my concerns. Um, how this is rendered, um, kind of makes it invisible, but it still looks quite awkward. Um, so you have to kind of weigh the two kinds of philosophies. I know a lot of work went into this design wise and the applicant has made it clear that they've been here several times. Um, I'm a little bit saddened that that topic of how this integrates with the existing building, uh, was not brought up previously. Um, you know, there are buildings that show a cornice, uh, above the level and then an addition above that and another cornice. And sometimes even a third addition on some buildings with an additional cornice. Uh, the Steinback Building is an example of having floors vertically added that almost, uh, like they belong there because of that kind of design philosophy. So just my, just my, uh, my two cents on this from, uh, uh, preservation and architectural perspective. Um, thank you very much. Um, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and I do not show any other hands raised.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, close public comment.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment closed.
Okay, um, here's a, here's a, a question, John. Are we, um, regarding the recessing of the windows and the, and the doors, is that something that has to come back?
Is that a question to me?
Yes, Jack.
Oh, 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 yes.
Okay, so then, um, so then-
Recession of, yeah, they'd have to go to the drawing board and come back and tell us, yeah.
Okay, so it seems as though that we're, uh, at this point, we have had all the testimony, uh, completed, unless someone feels that we haven't, uh, and so we're, we're completed with that. We have an agreement as to what we would like the design to look like of the doors and the windows. The only thing that's outstanding is, is the recession of those same windows and door. Um, we've also completed the third floor, so we have our, our, people's concerns about that have been heard. Uh, and, uh, so at this point, I believe that, uh, Irina, we're going to need a date.
And I am just looking that up, so the next available date that we have is, mm, um, it looks like May 2nd would be open.
Is that enough time for you, Mr. Karris?
We'll get it done.
Okay, so, at this point, can I get a motion to carry this application to May 2nd? Uh, I believe that at that point, it will be an in-person meeting-
That's correct.
If I'm, if I'm right, and, uh, with no, um, no notice.
Well, why, do I, do we have to make, Irina, do we have to have the applicant any type of notice since it's going to in-person? Or is that on our end?
So, I've already, um, I've actually already put in, uh, the notices to be published, uh, that the board will be going back to in-person meetings beginning April.
Okay, so then as long as we-
So I think that should be sufficient.
Okay, so as long as we make it without further notice and tell anyone who is in attendance that decided to come out that that meeting will not be, uh, virtual, it will be in-person at City Hall. That's, as long as that, we, we should be covered, there's no reason for another notice.
Okay, can I get, um, I made that motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
Just so we're clear then, the only thing that we're coming back with is going to be recessing that front facade, the windows and doors, am I correct?
That is correct, as far as I, as far as, uh, I can see, unless someone else has, feels something different, speak now.
Yeah, please do. The mullions to recessing, the mullions to recessing, the thin the doors-
It's, it's recessing the windows and the doors.
And the, the mullions. We've already gone through that. Yeah, we're, that's a given, they, they understand, okay, yeah, okay.
All right, so can I, I think that I did get a second from Daniel?
Yep, we have a motion by Barbara Krzysztof and a second by Daniel Scannamayo, Mayor John Moore. How do you vote for carrying the application?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ivan Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter?
Yes.
Eric Gallopo?
Yes.
Daniel Scannamayo?
Yes.
Juanita Barnes?
Juanita, you're muted.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krzysztof?
Yes.
Okay, application carried to May 2nd, 2022, in-person meeting without further notice.
Great, very good. Have a good night, everybody.
All right, thank you, um, I get a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara, before, before we do that, we just have one minor item.
I'm sure we do.
I know you love the one I do.
Oh, yes, the minor items.
All right, we just have two, um, uh, our newest member, James Bonanno, is going to take his oath of office, and James, I believe you've already signed your oath of office.
James, can you show us the signature?
Sure, uh, right here. I can get it in camera there.
Great, and I assume you read that before you signed it?
I did indeed.
Okay, great, thank you, we'll get, get, we'll get that to Irina and, uh, put it in the, and put it in the files.
All right, welcome, uh, welcome, James.
Thank you, Barbara.
Hopefully, he won't be, uh, scared off by this meeting.
I'm terrified already.
Some meetings are easy, some take some hard work, and board had to roll up its sleeves tonight.
All right, and, um, so our next planning board meeting will be Monday, April 7th, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, this will be an in-person meeting.
All right, now, now can I get a motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
So moved.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion by Daniel Scannamayo and a second by?
Jim Henry.
Jim Henry, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any others? Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.